Hello, I'm Greg Miles, sitting via telephone with Senseria Baldwin. How you doing?
Hi, Greg. How are you?
I'm doing all right.
Great.
So, the first thing- the first thing I would like to ask you is to basically give an overview of who you are and why you're running.
Absolutely, not a problem. Um, well, who I am, first of all, as you stated, my name is Senseria Baldwin. I am a candidate for Southfield City Council. Um, I have been a resident of Southfield, um, over ten years now. I'm a single mother of three young men. Uh, one of, uh, is, uh, of age now, I would say, um, he's flying- he's flown away, um, from the nest. And I have two that's still in the nest. Um, my background, um, I've- I've done cross-functional, um, management, um, with an entrepreneurial spirit. I'm- I'm an entrepreneurial spirit and, um, driven person with accomplishments in building and directing profit and nonprofit enterprises. Um, I current- I- I am currently appointed by the mayor on the historic, um, committee. I'm also, um, what I should say, I formerly served, um, on the Oakland County Women's Commission. Now considered the Oakland County Women's Advisory since its inception, um, and I would say since two thousand eight until two thousand and twelve. Um, I'm a community, um, advocate. I- I- I believe in where I reside at and I believe in getting my foot, um, in the door and getting my hands wet, um, for the people. I'm a- I'm a compassionate person. Um, I love helping people live productive lives and overcome adversities. Um, I- I have a- a tendency, um, to overlook the effects that people sometimes have because I want to make sure that I can help them overcome whatever that could be. Uh, I have a broad, very div- diverse background, Greg, so, um, I can probably close some more and add some more on my background in closing. But I know your interviews is- is very short and I- I know you have a lot more questions to ask.
Um, all right. Another thing I'd like to ask you is what do you feel the city needs going forward? What are some of the things that you think you would be able to add?
Um, oh, uh, wow, I- I- I'm gonna take that as sort of that's, you know, what is my vision for the city. And I'm just gonna collaborate that with what- what I feel the city needs as well as my vision, and I think that'll answer pretty much that question. Um, you know, let me go back to telling you first of all why I'm running for city council. I gave you a little bit of my background, but why I'm running for city council, um, is trust, Greg, I wanna make a positive difference. Um, I believe Southfield needs a new perspective, um, and it- and it- and absolutely a new progressive leadership. And of course, one that understands such as myself, the need to be viewed as a regional player in, uh, southeastern Michigan. And at the same time, politics is grand as the premier city and destination of choice for small and large businesses, Greg. And I believe also, um, culture diversity. It pushes me to run for this public position as well. And I realize I'm not a politician, but a public servant. I wanna put that out there. But what do I feel the city needs and what is my vision for the city? I'll sum that up. Um, I feel the city needs right now going f- uh, uh, going further, as I stated earlier. Number one, a new progressive leadership. Um, I have a very strong management professional background. Um, I believe the city, um, has to have a leadership that has a strategic vision to construct and implement a twenty-first century, um, economic development plan, Greg. And- and the strategy that makes Southfield the destination of choice for, of course, high skilled businesses, community values, increased housing without overtaxing our, you know, our residents here. And then, in addition to that, improving our reputation in the school district, improving our roads, digitalizing, um, city operations to enhance our services. Um, transparency, um, is obviously needed in- in our current, uh, governing body, uh, common sense as well, and common sense city ordinances and codes, uh, responsible citizen, uh, uh, ship, um, and individual accountability, along with synergy, and I can't stress that enough, along with synergy among our governing body. Um, I have a broad vision for Southfield and just to mention to you, um, the city, you know, we have a vibrant city. We wanna maintain a vibrant city and safe neighborhoods. We want first-rate school districts. We want full capacity of our commercial buildings here with select new development, a more pedestrian-friendly, as I stated earlier, and robust, uh, downtown, but, you know, we gotta- we gotta focus on our roads. We gotta make it pedestrian-friendly, um, and- and walkable, um, dog-friendly is not just for just pedestrians, but we gotta make it friendly for our animals here. Um, you know, we gotta look at the fact of, uh, we have a- a historic mall here in our city. You know, we- we have to look at revitalizing that mall onto a top-tier retail throughout the city anchor locations, uh, the return of, uh, a variety of upscale dining options, um, activities for our seniors, Greg, fifty-plus. Um, they have been tremendously reduced. I'm out here campaigning and- and seniors are saying, hey, what is it for us? Parks and Recreation used to have so many things for us. What do we do now? So, I- I'm looking at a broad vision that I believe that I can implement, um, along with the other, uh, colleagues of Southfield City Council.
In that last question, you mentioned quite a bit about development. About a year ago, actually, I don't even think it was a year ago, I think it might have been about six months ago, there was a pretty large controversy involving Walmart. I was just wondering how you would go about bringing together the community and the developers and how to resolve such conflicts if they arise in the future.
That's a good question, Greg, and thank you for asking me that. Well, let me just state this for the record. We need, first of all, to make our city business environment. And we have to do it by maximizing on incentives to stay accessible for businesses to come in. That's number one. Number two is we, of course, always have to listen to the needs of our residents. Now, I'm not gonna, um, I- I- I am all for economic development, okay? Um, how I would, uh, uh, bring that in and attract new businesses and corporations here to our city is to, one, make sure that it does not affect, um, the residents of our community. To make sure that they are not paying a cost for the choices that we're making. Because they shouldn't have to pay a- a price or a cost for the choices we make if they were not a part of that- of- of- of that choice. I believe that we should actually consider having a citizens committee, Greg, where our citizens can decide and they can look at, and our business owners, a business owners committee and a citizens committee that they meet, uh, maybe every ninety days, every six months, when we have a, uh, proposal on the table for a- a possible corporation that wanna come into our city. I think they should be more involved. I think we should offer them to- to be appointed possibly to a committee where they have a voice, where they have a say-so as to what they want here. But a collaboration with the business owners and collaborations a- among our neighboring cities is- is- is needed. Um, you know, Greg, I- I, like I said, I'm all for economic development, but I would like our residents to have more say-so, to be more involved in the process, in the project proposal. And, you know, when you're talking economic development, you have to have, again, like I stated earlier, common sense. You have to make the right choices on- on the behalf of the people as well as for the city. But I think there is a simplified way to do that, and that's one, making- making the process for- for development, for business owners to come in here is to make the process simplified. But then also, again, I suggest the citizens committee with the business owners committee. Let them collaborate, come together with the city, and we all make informed choices on our behalf and what's better for us to continue to maintain the quality of life.
All right. Um, over the past several years, the city budget has been constrained largely due to declining property values because of the housing market decline. I was just wondering, how would you deal with the budget crunch? Um, how would you make decisions about how to spend money in office?
That's a good question, uh, also, Greg. Um, how do we make decisions on how to spend our budget dollars in office? Well, I think first, we have to look at priority. I think priority, you're gonna probably hear that from- from- from everyone, um, that's running for office or those that's already in office. Priority is going, uh, to be the first thing that we have to look at in when we decide to allocate, um, funds. And then we have to, again, I said, stated this two years ago when I ran, and I'll state it again, we have to do comprehensive reviews for every budget department. Now, yes, two-thirds of our general fund goes to public safety and so what- what's the big deal? We- we need that public safety because we gotta keep in mind, that's why people move to our city, because they look for quality of life. And- and without quality of life, you couldn't have the best, I mean, you can't, without public safety and the staff and- and them being properly trained and- and proper- properly, uh, I'm sorry, uh, properly equipped, then you cannot have that better quality of life that you look for. Also, you cannot have a better quality of life if you don't build some type, at some point, a collaboration with the school board. It's time that we stop thinking the way that we used to think. It's time for a change way of thinking. It's time to implement new solutions. So, when we talk about spending, uh, uh, budget dollars, we're gonna have to look at what makes us viable? What keeps us sustainable? What makes us really the center of it all? What really makes that slogan stand out? And I think I'm gonna have to say that I would look at, um, where we're spending that money, for what, when, how, why? Does it, again, make sense? Where is it going? Is it prioritized? And does it help the city stay viable and sustainable?
Continuing with the theme of budgeting and- and city dollars, I was wondering what your position on tax abatements are? They're a pretty controversial issue and I was just hoping to get your- your stance on it.
Oh, that's another great question. Tax abatements, again, they're great too to be used for selective situations, uh, when it- when the employment numbers are high for, uh, for retainment, um, and/or, um, of course, when there is a significant of new employees. Um, companies will serve as a draw or hub for additional new businesses. Um, however, however, I think when we allow tax abatements for three to five years, I believe within those three to five years, at least the first three years, each year, we should be doing consistent audits. We should be making sure that the corporations that come to us to ask us for tax abatements, when we approve those tax abatements, are we doing what we need to do? We need to make sure we're doing audits. We need to make sure that the companies, the corporations, is actually doing what they said they would do. Are they meeting their projected goals and their deadlines? And if they are, Greg, I suggest while their profit, while their company is- is becoming viable and sustainable and it's profitable, I believe that we should have a fund set up where they can allocate some of their proceeds of their profit to a fund. So then when our city needs something, whether it's staffing, uh, whether it's a- a senior citizen, a- a recreation program, whatever the case may be, now we have another fund. What we will na- name that fund in the future, I don't know. But I expect, if I approve tax abatements, I would like to set a standard. I would like to see yearly audits. I would like to see are the corporations meeting their expecta- our expectations and what they projected, what was- what was their projected proposal to us and are they meeting that? And if they are, while they're gaining profits within these three to five years, I think we should actually too be gaining something from it as well. So, I think we should- we should actually, um, have an incentive. We should ha- we should set a standard. I don't even care if it's for a apprentice program where they give back to certain programs for the use. But I- I- I'm gonna be looking at that situation very closely as to how I rule for tax abatements. But again, like I said, it is a great tool for selective situations.
Excuse me. Um, an- another issue that comes up quite a bit is the maintaining of the city's infrastructure. I was just wondering if going forward, you had any ideas or- or thoughts regarding that?
Uh, again, when- when you're talking about infrastructure, you know, we're talking about, again, um, possibly, you know, our roads, um, you know, how we're doing things, um, i- is there anything different we should be doing in- in that area as far as our infrastructure? Fundamentally, um, the city must budget, of course, now for the future, um, to maintain and improve our aging infrastructure and to reduce the need, uh, should I say, to- to issue, uh, municipal bonds and- and mortgaging the- the financial future. I mean, the city has not had a good relationship with the road commission as far as I'm concerned. I think it takes, you know, uh, we should be, um, in better communication. Um, I don't think two years ago, something asked during a public forum, um, you know, what was the thoughts on the road commission being it? Why did they start the roads and then stop? And- and the answer that someone said, um, was that, hey, they ran, you know, we ran out of money. I- I don't believe in running out of money. I believe in, again, doing a comprehensive review of the budget, making sure it makes sense for what type of projects, for what type of infrastructure, and make sure that is there so that the job could be finished. Um, so there's not a lot of room, um, I mean, there is lots of room and starts for improvement, um, but basically the city and- and the county have engaged in a- in a finger-pointing exercise. We can't do that anymore. Um, Greg, we have reached a point, um, in our crossroads right now where our city is constantly and continuously aging, and we have to build collaborations. We have to build collaborations, uh, more effectively on the Oakland County level. I mean, we must take advantage of programs, um, such as the Public Act Two Ten, by the way, which brings in, again, a- a- another incentive to bring in, uh, new businesses. But- but also, you know, the One Step Ready program that Oakland County has. I mean, there is a lot of things that we need to be doing that we haven't done. And out of all these years, we should be, um, a little bit further than where we- where- where we're at. And I don't feel that we are because, again, we have lacked having new progressive leadership.
All right. One of the things I often hear about in city council meetings are discussions about regional competition. Um, competing- competing with other communities for jobs, um, grant money, and- and population. I was just wondering how you feel about that and how you would also balance that competition with interacting with other communities in common goals?
Um, oh, wait, um, here's the thing. Again, I- I'm gonna go back to, um, you know, building, again, on strong foundations, strong relationships, um, collaborations, partnerships is- is a- is a huge key. Uh, we have to provide people, um, wh- what they want. Um, by doing that, we have to continue to build and invest in Southfield. We have to look at long-term sustainability. We can't continue to survive on status quo, okay? We have to provide insight on how we can improve ourselves in going forward. So, you know, again, Greg, I hope this answers your question. Uh, you know, I think we have to, again, and I'm very strong on building collaborations, building those partnerships, taking advantage of the sources and the resources that we have here, utilizing our media, um, our news, by all means necessary, um, getting the word out. What doesn't really mean to be the center of it all? We have the slogan, but where is really our center? So, I think enough said and it's time for things to be done. So, and- and- and that's why I have my own self-made word, and it's people's fishing and not a politician. People are tired of hearing, you know, the same old political answers. They want someone that's transparent, down-to-earth and real, and is capable of doing what they say they would do and not wait to get in office, and then they cannot complete those things or even address those things. So, again, I- I- I gotta just strongly say, um, building collaborations is- is key. I mean, that's key. We just, we can't- we can't keep going on like this and not have that, build those strong partnerships in going forward.
How proactive are you when it comes to issues that you care about? And how would you go about pursuing those issues?
Well, how proactive am I in issues that I hear about? Well, since I've been ca- campaigning, I hear about various issues. I have already, um, been hands-on with addressing issues. Let's take, for example, um, I have a business supporter that have a store here. He had someone come in and do some paper crimes. Um, he did not get the response or the communication he wanted between, um, our police department and him here as a business owner. I took it upon myself to put him in contact with our chief. Our chief addressed his concerns and addressed this issue because I came in as a liaison to hear what- 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 what are your concerns here as a business owner and how can we keep you here? I think we need more of that. I think we, in order to retain the businesses that we have here, we have to appreciate them even wanting to continue to be here. We have to address their concerns by going to the businesses, visiting the- the senior citizens', uh, uh, homes, uh, going to even the hospitals, um, talking to people in the grocery stores, patronizing, um, our community businesses here. And when you do those things and you begin to engage and interact, you find out some of the concerns. So, I think we can put ourselves in a position of sometimes being a liaison to address them. There's various numerous, uh, situations now. Um, I did contractual work in the largest, uh, nonprofit organizations here in Southfield, uh, which I was a life skill instructional, um, course person. And I loved what I did because I had not only compassion for what I did, but I had compassion for who I was doing it for, which was a mommy and me program for- for young women that had issues and would get pregnant at an early age but did not have any family support. So, things like that, I've been very active in various, uh, organizations in addition, like I said, to managing, um, nonprofit and profit organizations and making sure they stay afloat, um, business retention and feasibility. So, I've done those things. I'm doing those things. And that doesn't, running for public office as a public servant, that's what we- that's who I am. That's what we do, that- and that's what we should do. We should look at ourselves as public servants, be just that and do just that.
You've previously run for office before, and I was just wondering, are there any positions that you've changed your mind on since last time you've run?
I'm sorry, I ca- I ca- say that again, Greg, you went a little bit far out.
All right. You've previously run for public office before, and I was just wondering, have any of your positions and opinions changed since then? I believe it was two thousand and eleven, but I'm not sure.
Absolutely, you're exactly right, and I did. And, um, and let me just say too, since you brought that up, not only did I run two years ago, I ran two years ago with twelve candidates, twelve candidates, which I can say, and I'm sure you know, that not one of those candidates, not one, came back to run in this general election. I am the only, um, one from two years ago that came back to run in this general election in addition to being one minority female in this general election. Yes, have things, have my platform and my initiatives changed from two years ago? Absolutely. Two years ago, my top priority was address, uh, our- our- our high rate of foreclosures that we have within our city. Well, we've seen a change. We've seen a change for the better. Property values are back up, foreclosures are down. So, of course, in two years, have my initiatives changed? Um, it went from that to now encouraging, uh, renewable, um, energy resources. Uh, I would like to make sure or see a legislation passed that will expedite us into deregulating our energy services from DTE. People need to have a choice as to who they would like their energy providers to be. Um, they need to have a choice as to whether or not they wanna be locked into a certain rate. They need to have a choice on whether or not they want a smart meter, um, which I do understand, well, what, if that's in the making to have a op- be in an opt-out program. But prior to that, that had affected a lot of people when they were exposed to a lot of radiation and it- it created a public health issue. Why? Because there was no standard set in place for DTE. So, yeah, have my initiatives changed in the last two years? Absolutely. I think every day our lives changed. Every moment, every second, our lives can change. And just because of that, when life changed, we have to change with it. We must adapt and not conform.
I often hear that the roads in the city need work. I was just wondering if you had any particular road that you feel the city needs to work on more so than the others?
Oh, absolutely. Greenfield, Greenfield. Um, if I had to, I had to talk to M. Dot or the Road Com- Oakland County Road Commission right now and I had to say, hey, this is what, uh, this is a priority and this is the major road that you need to work on, I would first say, I need you to concentrate on Greenfield between eight and nine mile. And then I would say, I need you to concentrate on putting in, uh, walkable pathways, um, sidewalks for, so it can be pedestrian-friendly. And then also bicycle, uh, 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 trails. So, that is, uh, bicycle-friendly. And then, of course, when you do that, you make it animal-friendly as well. And you- and you, you know, you look at the seniors when they're in their wheelchairs or their walkers or they're walking on chains. So, first priority, if I had to prioritize and I had to say one, two, three, four, one would be, hey, let's look at those roads right here on Greenfield between eight and nine mile. I believe anybody that drives that road enough definitely is spending money on either getting their car rebalanced or a wheel alignment. I mean, that would be the first thing I would look at and say, hey, let's take a look over here. That would be my first priority.
All right. Well, we're almost out of time. I was just wondering if you had anything specifically that you wanted to tell the audience?
Yes, I do, Greg, and thank you, thanks again for asking me that as well. Um, again, as you stated earlier, my name is Senseria Baldwin. I am a candidate for Southfield City Council. I did run two years ago, again, among twelve candidates, which not one came back to run in this general election. I want that to speak volumes to the people. I want them to hear my compassion in my voice. I want them to know my passion that I have for the city and the things that I set forth to accomplish with this innovative platform that I have set forth. Um, you know, I- 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 I'm out here to, you know, do- I'm doing this and, Greg, I'm fighting hard because I want people to reach their full potential in life. Uh, I think the only way sometimes in doing that is positioning ourselves as a public servant so that our voices are- are heard more- more loudly and that we speak abroad and at large and put ourselves in a position where people can- can get information. I believe knowledge is power, Greg. Um, I'm an excellent communicator and negotiator. I'm a strong problem solver and a decision-maker, sound judgment. I'm flexible and adaptable in response to market and economic changes. Uh, like I said before, I have kept organizations and do keep organizations moving forward under stress or difficult situations. I believe I'm high-energy. I'm a hands-on person who welcomes diversity and leads by example. And, you know, I think, again, I'm transparent. I think the people, that's what they want. They wanna change. They wanna change way of thinking. Um, they wanna be able to email you and get- and get a reply. They want technology savvy people. People just wanna change and they don't want politics. They just want a people's person, and that's who I am. And so, um, again, I- I humbly ask for the votes of our people on November the fifth. And Greg, I thank you again for affording me this opportunity to speak with you, and I think you had great questions. And I hope that they answer, uh, my answers, uh, answer a lot of the questions that the residents have. And moving forward, I think we can make it great together. One of my themes is we can make it better together and, you know, vote for brighter leadership for a better future.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, Greg, thank you. Have a good evening and have a blessed holiday.
All right, you too. Bye. Alright, you too. Bye.